All right. Well, uh, welcome to the October meeting of the Canada's planning board. Holly, call the role, please.
Chairman Mayor. Mr. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Nestro.
Here.
Mr. Winterman.
Here.
Ms. Donovan here. Donna here. Mr. Youthy. Vice Chair McCumsky.
Here.
And this is.
Ms. Hopkins. Thank you. So since we have a full board meeting, you can participate in discussions, but no vote.
Got it.
And it will count as a paid meeting. You can put it on your voucher for payment, too. Okay, stand and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, um, on the agenda, there's a privilege of the floor. Is there anything that anyone would like to bring up that's not on the agenda?
I just handed out a flyer. We handed out a flyer for, there's going to be informational meetings. At the Honey Island Public Library, if you'd like more information about it, let us say. Trying to create as much open space or conservative space in between Hemlock and Hightower.
So it'll be an informational meeting.
Yep.
Looks good. Naples Village Annex. Guess I can find that. Thank you, Birch. Appreciate that.
Yeah, but there's one right at, uh, there's a Honey Island Public.
Oh, there is a Honey Island?
Yeah.
Oh.
You can find that, right?
Yes. I go there all the time. Thank you. Not all the time, frequently I go there. About once or twice, once every couple of weeks, new books. Okay. Anything else? There's another opportunity at the end of the meeting, if you happen to think of something. So we'll go into approving of the minutes from the September meeting. Any corrections? I only had one, um, in the last vote. You had Gwen is voting yes, but she was abstaining. Because we had a full board. Okay. Uh, with that, I'll have a motion to, uh, approve the minutes as amended.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Thank you. Good. Okay, reports, um, town board meeting, I attended the October thirteenth meeting. They, uh, had a public hearing on capital improvement costs for the water district. Nobody was here to speak about it, so they closed it. Reports, uh, nothing significant in the reports, nothing different. Highway Department, they're busying themselves with road patching, helping the other, a couple of the other towns with their highway work. Helped Richmond and Bristol do some work. He reported that the, the road striping is complete. Uh, the mowing, the third round of roadside mowing was complete, so Tim had some extra time, so he's doing some brush mowing along on the sides. So you might see some ugly looking brush where he's chopped some of that off. Um, and they did mention that Tim, the mowing guy who's a part-time employee is retiring at the end of the year, so. I imagine he'll be looking for a replacement. Other than that, they did some, uh, maintenance on their vehicles. They put in a voucher for two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for chips cost for the roads for the year. That all gets reimbursed to the town, but the town pays for it or finances it. I'm not sure what they do. But that's all, I was kind of surprised with that a moment, but. And that was his report. Honey Island Lake watershed, uh, severe blue-green algae. Um, many places around the lake, he attributed that to low water levels. Uh, low water levels changes of the thermocline layers within the, the lake. The thermocline layers is what either inhibits or accelerates phosphorus release from the bottom into the water. And the phosphorus comes up, contributes the blue-green algae. So it was ongoing and he said it'll, it'll stop when the temperature drops. Water operations, everything was normal there. Supervisor mentioned that they do have a solid waste management plan timeline. Uh, if anyone's interested in seeing what that is, that's replacing the landfill. You're probably up on that, right? But, uh, if you, you can ask Caitlin or you can talk to Chris Bestol if you'd want to see the timeline. There was a little discussion, uh, from the new superintendent, you know, are we really going to do that? And so they got off a little on a side conversation on that. Uh, they reviewed the preliminary town budget. I have a copy of it here. And that'll be on the agenda for their next, maybe their November town board meeting to approve that. The notable things, everything's fairly straightforward. It is notable that, uh, most employees got a three percent raise this year. None of those wild increases, the last two years, they had some huge increases for the town justices and the town supervisor. And a couple more and then, so that, that's all been brought into line. And so now they're about a three percent raise for across the board for employees. We're getting a four percent raise. Actually, we're going up to fifty dollars next week, next year instead of forty-eight. And Holly's getting five dollar raise. Wow. Yeah. Uh, but I do have a copy if anybody wants to look it over, or you can come to the, uh, town board meeting. Which will be the second Monday of November, where they will be voting on approval of the town budget for twenty twenty-six. They, uh, they had a couple of resolutions. Oh, the highway department bought a, a large equipment trailer from East Bloomfield and a leaf collector from East Bloomfield, both used. They were going to, they were going to vote on, uh, the local law code book update for the recreational vehicles, but at that point, I brought up the question that we had discussed at our last meeting about county planning board approval. They kind of went into shock, you know, didn't really realize and so they had a little discussion about it. The new supervisor said, well, you just keep going. You don't have to worry about it, but, uh, in any, any event, they, uh, delayed that. They're going to submit it to the county planning board. And they asked, you know, how did this come up? You know, how'd you guys even get into this? Mentioned that our county planning board rep brought it to our attention and, uh, I'm not sure if they were real happy about that or not, but we need to get online, you know, in every, every instance, everywhere we can. We need to be following state and local laws, and that's a state, a county law. Um, along that line, you'll see in your packet. Birch was very good about this. He got a list from Kyle, who's.
No, actually, I got it from their website.
Oh, you did?
It's right there on their website. I was going to get it from Kyle.
I thought you got it.
But then I go, well, wait a minute, let me look.
Okay, so you, you can look it over. These are the kinds of things that need to be submitted. And, and the, the big thing for us would be if there's any significant uh, development along a county line, a county road or a county property, they have to go county planning. Pretty much everything else is exempt. They don't have to go through, but they do say that, uh, text amendments to local zoning laws need to come before them. That's in there. So that's one area we've been lax in. It's a town, but it's interesting, uh. So that's, I just gave you that for your information.
I did have a question.
Yes.
Um, so I didn't see anywhere in exempt or not, local laws or code changes on any of these lists.
Oh.
Code changes would be text amendments.
So that's what we think is falling under this adoption of amendment of zoning regulations?
Tax and door map.
Okay, so that's what would be a.
But if you have procedural things like when the board meets or you know, things in the code book that don't have to do with zoning regulations, then they don't have to be presented.
I think that's the key. Anything that falls within our zoning.
Which is pretty much everything.
Which is pretty much everything, but we do a significant number of subdivisions, so that remains a question.
It says.
As long as there are no variances, does it say?
It's a subdivision of land into two lots.
If I meet all applicable code, they, they don't need a variance or anything.
Uh, we had one where it was three lots.
Yeah, we did, didn't we? We didn't send that.
No.
That was the one up the next to Harriet Hollister.
Yep.
Far for recreation area would also trigger.
Yeah, that's, it's, so we missed on that one also, because that same, that same subdivision was a three lot subdivision.
Well.
And it, it joins Harriet Hollister Park on the north side of Harriet Hollister.
Yeah, but I, if it's, if it's exempt. Because if it's just subdividing two lots, it's exempt, even it's, even if it's within that five hundred. No, the one with three, yes.
That's the same one that, that.
But we had another one with two across the street.
Yep, that was Mr. Ward.
That was on the.
He was on the west side of Ross Road.
Side in the west side of west, west side of Ross Road, I thought, one to three, one way.
No, he went to two, I believe it did. Maybe it was three. You remember that direction? Four? Was it really?
He kept two for himself and he sold two off. So that would be four lots.
Oh, that's right.
But both of those parcels are well beyond five hundred feet from Harriet Hollister.
Yeah, those wouldn't be.
Well, if it's two or more, it would still be.
Okay, so we're seeing that where?
Oh, wait.
Two or more.
Eleven.
Okay, never mind. I, I get.
Subdivision of two land into two lots is exempt. So the assumption is if it's more than two, it's not exempt and should.
But he's more than five hundred feet from Harriet Hollister?
Oh, yeah.
From any state land?
Yeah, they're down at the corner.
Okay.
And then they're on the west side.
Alright, so they would be exempt. I thought I was.
So, uh, keep me honest when we have subdivisions or anything else, keep these in mind.
I thought interesting streamer drainage channel owned by the county.
The what?
A stream or drainage channel owned by the county, so that could be. You know, if you have a drain of, of, I mean, yeah. If it's owned by the county.
Right.
Anyway.
So any, yeah, any county property you have to take or anything adjoining that, we have to take a little more care. And we'll move forward.
So.
I won't mention any doing anything retroactively.
Um, should we ask the county for input on that, though? I just don't want to see us get into a situation where you've adopted short-term rental regulations without going through the proper channels. And then if, if we don't, if somebody challenges us, it could open us to.
I specifically asked that of the town board. They had no interest in it.
But that's, that's a question for the county, for the town attorney.
Yeah, right, and they may, they may.
Not the county planning board, the, the town.
Yeah.
Attorney. Someone has to ask that question. So I was going to distribute this to the members of the town board and the zoning board of appeals. So everyone has a copy.
Yep.
Go ahead, girls.
I was, I was going to talk about this in a little bit, but, um, there's some other, um, information here. When I went to that training session, um, the zoning board of appeals might each like to have a copy of this. It's called the James Cone Local tech, government technical series, and it talks all about what zoning boards of appeals are supposed to be doing and how they're supposed to be doing it, when they're supposed to be doing it. And the one that was, the, there are two that are of interest to us, guide to planning and zoning laws in New York State. And I think we'll find a lot of the things that we're talking about are right in here. We can find it right in the state text.
We have copies of those. We have a little library of planning board documents right down here in the file cabinet.
I just.
Both of those are, all three of those are in there.
I just picked them up on Friday, so I haven't had a chance to really review them. I, I have a feeling.
If you happen to go.
A lot of it's going to look familiar to me, but, um, and then there's another good one on conducting public meetings and public hearings.
Yeah, that was the other thing. I was debating whether or not to include a copy of the open meetings law, which we don't follow.
Right, not all boards, not all boards follow that.
Right.
And that has been mentioned many times to no avail. So.
Well, that might be a good, uh, question for the county attorney also, because.
Town, town.
I, town attorney, I'm sorry, town attorney, because, um, if the proper state regulations aren't followed, how open to question is the final decision made?
I mean, like technically minutes are supposed to be published two weeks. They don't have to be final minutes.
Yeah.
But they have to be published on your website.
Within two weeks, unless there's an executive session. This is, this is one they went over at the training. And if there's an executive session, there has to be, um, meeting minutes come out of that within one week.
If they made a.
No, they don't have to always have minutes on an executive session.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Only.
You don't, it doesn't have to be in any detail. Um, and you don't make decisions, then you come out of executive session to make the decision.
I read it that if, if their vote was taken at the executive session, then that had to be.
The, yeah, votes have to be recorded.
But discussion doesn't.
No, no.
What they do is if you'll, if you read the town board minutes, which are online available, they will say, you know, we, somebody made a motion that we go into an executive session, and so it is recorded, uh, and then it's recorded that the executive session ended and the meeting was not adjourned.
But they do need to say why they're going, why they're going to executive session.
Yes.
They can't just say we're going to executive session like the zoning board of appeals did recently or a while ago. So you have to say for personnel reasons or.
Yeah, there's a list. The state has a list.
Yep.
So it's real easy to, to, to say it's, and you can quote it verbatim right from the state lift.
Yeah. Well, again, we're not the legislative body. I have mentioned all of these things to at the town board meetings multiple times. And we don't get any action. I, so I'm taking my hands off, but I, it's like beating your head against the wall. No, no. I mean, if there's something the board would like me to do, I'd be happy to do it, but I, I don't know what more we can do. And Birch always brings it up uh, as well when he has a chance. So it's particularly about the, uh, open meetings law, the need for minutes. They are, they have minutes for the last couple of meetings, uh, not the October, but they have the recording of, of the October minutes.
The way I also read the open meetings law is that if you have a website and you're going to be just, you know, you have documents you should, that pertain to the, what the board is doing. I read that they should be published on the website before the meeting, but.
Oh, like applications and.
I think probably, yeah.
Yeah, that.
Although I would black out phone numbers and.
Yeah.
Personal information, but I think technically, yes.
Yeah, they, they went into that in detail at that blackout personal identifying informa-.
Yeah.
Information, PII, they called it.
Do you know how to do that? If I gave you copies of the applications and, uh.
I don't think Holly has access to the website.
No, you, that's right, you can't post to the website. Sorry.
Anyway, I mean, I think the whole idea is, you know, it's public information. Instead, instead of saying, oh, if you want to read it, you can come by the and read it at the office.
Yeah, that's what we do now. In the legal notices, we say that the applications available will be reviewed at the town clerk.
Right, right.
It's office.
But I, I just read it a little differently. I mean, but Darla, you were at the training?
Yeah.
For open meetings?
They, they talked about that. They talked about conducting, um, what did they call it? They didn't call it, the, the session was called conducting public meetings and public hearings, but obviously it talked a lot about public, the open meetings law.
So do we have anything actionable here?
Well, so part of the, the comp plan is a lot about, like, as we move forward, looking at communications as a whole. So maybe we sort of get the comp plan adopted in December and then, um, take a look at communication strategies as a whole and, um.
But the town board should be doing that.
I forget who we said. I think it says in the comp plan that, uh, committee will take a look at communication as one of the actionable steps. So I think that this would kind of fall under that umbrella. And maybe that's the way to get some, some traction is to have a committee with people from various boards and.
I would be interested in that committee. Definitely. And I'm retiring at the end of December, so I'm going to have time.
Oh. Careful what you say.
So does that, Ted, does that make sense to you as, as a way that?
To get at everything on the right track? Yeah, it does, um. And when we get to that point, if, if indeed, applications and maps, et cetera, need to be posted on the website prior to our meeting, then, uh, either Eileen will give Holly access to it, or Eileen will have to do it. She's the only one that I know right now that can actually post anything to the website. So that sounds like a good, uh, good plan.
I think part of that, too, is rec, doing some things, recommending website be updated and redesigned.
It's, you know, we have the, the email subscribers. It's not really getting utilized now, some website stuff that could get cleaned up, and I think this kind of would fall all within that. In that kind of umbrella.
That sound reasonable to everyone?
Yep.
Okay. Good discussion. Thank you. That was, okay. That was all I had from the town board. County Planning Board?
Um, I attended the October seventh CRC meeting and the planning board meeting on the eighth. No, nothing real significant. It is interesting Naples, which had a moratorium on solar and, or renewable energy. Redid their whole solar and wind energy zoning, um, so that it's more up to date. They're not trying to prevent it, but they want to make sure that the regulations are tight, so that if the state comes in, they can say this is our position. And there is a there's been a lot of chatter lately for a wind project that's proposed. Um, it would be spring water, Naples. I'm not sure Kohocton or not, but kind of in this triangle that we would see from here. And I don't know where this, where that is.
Multiple tones.
Yeah.
Counties.
That's right, counties, yeah.
Yeah, it's been on, but it's Liberty Solar.
They got solar or both?
Wind. Wind. Twenty-five, nineteen to twenty-five units, and it would be, um, above, uh, the ski area, um, that's the ski area on thirty-six, the private.
Hun Hollow.
Hun Hollow. Above Hun Hollow is part of the proposal. So reaching up pretty far, not touching Canada's, but. And then, uh, where is it? The fruition seeds? What's the name of that road?
The what?
Hickory Bottom, that whole area in there was, is part of their proposal, at least what's online. So just information for people.
I wonder if that's related. Most garden them out, asking me to take a survey.
That was for us, that's for a solar farm to the west. That, uh, someone's proposing to do. Very good.
Okay.
So that has not come to you in the planning, on the county planning?
No.
Just talking about it. Looks like you folks are, you know, about it.
But it wouldn't come to us until there's a final plan.
Okay, so nothing in the planning stage.
Right.
Stage. Okay.
But I think Naples updated their code because of this worry about it.
Okay.
And then sent it to county planning.
Yes, because.
Well, they updated first and then, and then sent it.
No, they didn't update it. This is, they sent it to county planning for us to look at, and then they'll vote on it. So this was a update. They didn't.
To their zoning.
To their zoning. But they're going through the correct process.
Okay, that's, I was, yeah, well, okay. Good. All right. Anything else for Birch? Thank you. Zoning Board, um, they did have a meeting, uh, this month. They, it was, they have a video recording of the meeting. It was about seventeen minutes long and I didn't have time to to look at it, so, but it's up there. Um, the previous meeting, they held public hearing, a couple of public hearings, so I assume they voted on those variances. And one has to do with a fence down on County Road thirty-six.
They're going through some litigation, aren't they?
Yeah. Well, and the other one was in the, uh, public hearing was that, uh, an applicant had combined a couple of parcels with the hopes of not request, not needing a variance for an overhang on a building. But, so they held a public hearing on that, so I imagine, I assume they voted on that at the October meeting.
Wasn't the guy decided to move the whole building or something?
That was.
Or that was a different.
That was a different one.
Oh, okay.
So they, they've been pretty active, I guess, on the zoning board. Code enforcement, we included the, uh, list from Joe Miller. He didn't have anything to add. Well, the only thing he added to the town board meeting was the property on Ross Road. Mr. Smith, um, the town went in and demolished an unsafe building. Um, they have to add the cost of that, uh, demolition to his tax bill, and they voted on that as a resolution. Apparently it didn't get paid for, so it's going on his tax bill. So that was a resolution of the town board meeting. And there's Joe Miller's list there. Comprehensive plan?
Uh, so the comp plan went to the county planning board for review, um.
Oh. Yeah, that, that did. And it was, it passed with, uh, no comments and compliments to the plan, the people doing the plan, and they thought it was good. So that was it.
Again, so.
Forgot all about that one.
Didn't sound like there was much comment, um, so there's not extensive changes. Didn't sound like there was much comment, um, so there's not extensive changes to be made and so we are on schedule. Uh, to go for approval at the December town board.
December, not November.
No.
Okay.
Cause we, we have to do another public hearing, so they'll have to announce it at the November one. A month ahead of time.
Public hearing and then a resolution to adopt at the December.
At the December meeting. And because of the budget at the November meeting.
Oh, yeah.
We decided to wait till December.
December meeting. That's good.
Then maybe it's done.
Yeah.
As far as we are concerned, I think it's done.
Fantastic. Great job. Okay. New business, okay. Ontario County Planning Board Information, we already done all that. I didn't read it. Gonna get sidetracked there unless there was something else we wanted to talk about. Um, I put on the agenda timber harvesting updates. We had a timber harvest request. Again, our board doesn't normally do site plans for timber harvest. Because they're mostly they're carried on. Or they're, uh, they're overseen by a registered forester or someone so that they're exempt from local, from a site plan. But we had one a few months ago and as we were going through it, we just kind of discovered that the. The paperwork and some of the wording and the questioning, questions. Might be able to be updated a bit and made a little more clear to us. Since we don't get them very often, you know, what it is we're supposed to be looking at. So I have a copy of the the handout that an applicant gets from. The town clerk, which is the. Application and the questions and the requirements. Um, often what we do, if if there's an interest on in the board, we often look to other towns. We review their timber, their, their. Regulation in the same area. And if there's some updates, we can borrow from them or we can update ourselves or we can leave it the way it is. So I, I had, I recall a meeting. And there was a lot of concern about, we should be updating these things. So I'm looking for a volunteer. That might wanna take this on. I, I just copied off the. Timber Harvest Regulation from the town of South Bristol. It looked pretty good. This is the regulation. I didn't get to the actual forms, you know, and the questionnaires that they would, that an applicant would use. But is there anyone that would be interested in taking that on? There's no time. Frame or anything like that. And what you would do, what I would expect is you take a look at what we have. Uh, perhaps identify things that might be improved, updated. Use other, other towns, resources and come back to us as a board with a recommendation. Any interest in doing that?
I'll take that on.
All right, Rich. I also have that in. Electronic form. Eileen sent me that in electronic form.
And I know a forester that if you'd be interested in getting their feedback on what would they allow.
We also have a town resident who's a forester.
The only one of the. Cory Figurito, he's not, his parents are a town residents, but he's not. Who is it? He's a state, he works for the state, a state forest.
Yep, he works for the D C. He lives over on County Road thirty-seven, he said.
Okay. June Bryce.
Yeah, he's a good man.
And do you remember the meeting that we had the discussion about? Just Rich might be interested in.
I have the whole folder right here.
Just watching the recording, I think it'd be interesting to hear what we talked about in the code. Um, that we were like, this seems ambiguous. Cause I don't remember the specifics. I just remember.
I brought the phone, the application and what's.
That there were some things that we were like, this is, it wasn't very clear, I think was some of the confusion.
April. Twenty-eight.
April twenty-eight, okay.
Was so, well, that was when I wrote the note to.
With a timber harvest that has a forest, a registered forester. They still need to do an application, but we don't have to.
It's just the registration form.
Right, yeah, okay.
And a couple of pages that are in, in.
And it's over a certain.
And. Yep, oh yeah, there's a threshold that below the threshold.
You don't have.
You don't have to even.
Right.
Ask for timber. What normally happens if there's a forester. Um, we get a form and there's sign offs. CEO signs off on it, the highway department, I, I sign off on it and the town clerk, and then it goes into a file. And that's. Has some of these general questions, how much wood, where it's going to be, how it's gonna be transported and things like that, so. I was looking here. Actual date. That's a good idea to look at the recording of that.
I just remember we had a lengthy discussion about the code during that.
It was at the April meeting, I believe it was April twenty-eighth.
The meeting I missed.
You weren't here for that?
So that would have been May, era, end of April.
Yeah, I think it was April twenty-eight. So, and I do have the, you know, the stuff that we actually had and looked at from that whole application, if you're interested, Rich. Also. That goes in our files eventually, but nobody's looking at it, so you can have it for now. Thank you very much. And if, you know, if you run into any questions or anything, we do have the town attorney on retainer. Uh, to answer, she's very responsive. Uh, give her a call, Sheila Shalfo, and if you have any questions about that, legal questions. Feel free to contact her, cause she is on retainer to the town, so. She doesn't charge us anything for it directly. Yeah.
What's your name?
Sheila Shalfo. C H A L I F O U X, I believe. She's also the town attorney for Richmond. And one other town. I don't think it's Victor. But she is, she's, she's really helpful. And she has attended our meetings in the past on request if we ever wanted her to come. And she does attend the town board meetings on request as well. All right. The last thing was to fill out the vouchers. So before you leave tonight, if you haven't gotten it to me, to me if you would. And the final privilege of the floor, is there anything anybody has thought about that wanted to? Oh, yeah.
Sponsored by the Genesee Finger Lakes Regional Planning Council, and it was up in Wayne County at the. Bosse's, which had excellent conference facility. I had never been in it before. It was good. Lunch was good. There were many different. Sessions. They had two, two things going at the same time, and I couldn't get to all of the ones that I felt were interesting, but I did. Go to Land use and seek her case law update. Department of Consumer Protection did resources for STEM and identity theft. Prevention, which was quite interesting. Uh, public meetings and hearings, that was the York State Department of State. And the climate smart communities and color your community green. How to approach local climate actions. And I didn't realize that it's town of Richmond. Uh, did one of these color your community green projects. So I'd never heard of it before, so that was, that was quite interesting. The, the last one was using artificial intelligence to transform daily government work. That was interesting. A little scary for somebody like me, but. I do have a lot of notes and information, so if you have any particular interest in any of those topics.
Do, are they going to have those sessions available online to view? Sometimes they do have.
I don't think they do.
I don't think.
Do you see Finger Lakes?
Not for their government workshops, cause I went to the one in the spring and it was really good.
They may have.
A handout.
They made copies, they handouts online. I don't. But I did, as I said before, I did grab a bunch of. Good information from. In my, in my prior life. With the county planning department. I remember reading these things. I'm sure there was a lot. These are all updated. Since a hundred years ago.
We were supposed to be doing something with clean, smart. Whatever they call it.
Climate smart.
Climate smart.
Smart.
And I think Richmond just got an award for some money. Well, we did the geothermal, I think all the LED lights and stuff have been done here.
Time limits on.
On our.
You can apply.
Yeah, and on our website. We say we're looking for people, but it's dated twenty.
Yeah, he's been looking for people for a long time. Chris Vestola is heading it up.
So it's kind of.
I think you were interested in that, Caroline. The green.
Yes, I was, yeah.
So did you hear anything or not?
Yeah.
So. We'll have a change of administration. We'll see if.
Things going on within the room, they call it, and one that, there was a. But there was a, apparently municipalities and apply for. Grants to help them upgrade their refrigeration units. Now, we don't have an ice skating rink, so we don't have anything like that. But there were other things that were listed. I had no idea it was equipment that might qualify. Or something like that.
Yeah.
Or some similar grants. I, I feel like I just kind of scratched the surface of a lot of things that. There's more information out there than I could take in one day.
Yeah. Those, those sessions are really good. All day, twice a year. And often they have repeats of this, of some of the session, you know, the planning board. Zoning board and things like that. Not specific, so. Good, I'm glad you enjoyed it. It was, it was helpful. All right, and so it's a reminder, everyone needs minimum four hours of training. For this year, by the end of the, by the end of December, not you. When, you, you're welcome to get, you know, to take any of the training, but not required this year. Okay, is there anything else?
I, I have a couple of questions I don't think are planning board questions, but I thought someone might know what kind of questions they are.
Go right ahead.
Um, one is, is there anywhere that does like a ballot preview for the, like, with the election coming up?
You go to the Ontario County Board of Elections. That you can actually.
Sample ballot, they call it.
For each town.
For each town.
Yeah.
Yep. Perfect.
And there's early voting that started, I think.
Yep.
It's kind of weird hours, though. So check before you go to Canandaigua.
Oh, yeah.
And Canandaigua and Victor and where's like their. Geneva.
Probably Geneva, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I also wondered, I, again, not a planning board thing, but given. The government shutdown and the like SNAP benefits, for example, that are running out, is there town information? Like, I, I know. There are school-based food drives, but I wondered if there's a town effort to try and. Support folks.
Nothing from the town, but there are some food pantries. There's one in Hemlock.
Yep. One in Richmond, the U C C.
Yeah, but that was kind of intermittent. Set.
I.
It was like every two weeks.
I don't know the frequency, but it is at the U C C.
Hemlock had one of them every.
So most of these are run by Food Wing out of the city, then they send a satellite vehicle out here with the food for these communities.
So you could call food.
Okay, yes.
And they do a lot of like drive-through ones in, at the town of Canandaigua, too. That's a really large one. That's open.
And water, fire department, I think, would take their.
I've only seen them there once.
Okay.
Um, thank you. Here's my last question. There's a bunch of trees down on the Canada's Trail. Is that, I don't know if that's old, cause usually I go to the north side and today I went to the south side.
You're talking about Rob's Trails?
That, no, like the lakeside trail.
They just cleared them out. They had a bulldozer down there and they just cleared them out. It was down there this morning.
Wow, yeah, it was so pretty.
Yeah.
But so is that, that, is that not an US thing because it's registered?
State.
Foresters.
D E C. D E C is exempt from their own, from their own. Regulations.
Okay, yeah, I was down there. I was like, I get informed about the trees now, like. But I didn't know about this. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I had. Yeah, I was, we were, well, the south end, we were down there this morning. They're doing our exercise. They weren't blocking the road, the path, but they were close to the pass and. Big bulldozer tracks her and the trees are way off to the side.
So I've contacted D C Forestry and they've been very responsive. They were very responsive.
Yeah. Okay, I have one. I was debating whether to have it on the recorder, but. In July. We processed a subdivision application for. Keith Haas, H A S S. Uh, property on Curtis Road, just north of where Middle Road goes off and Curtis continues. Uh, simple subdivision, no issues, no problems whatsoever. Um, no variances, no issues. Mister Haas submitted the survey maps to me. I signed them on July. Seventeenth. I called him, told him they were here and ready to be picked up and that he needed to get them to record in the county. I left them in mailbox for two months. He never came, he never called. I called, so in the meantime, it turns out we have a regulation that if this is not filed with the county. Within sixty-two days of approval, it is considered null and void. I contacted Mister Haas about two weeks ago. He gave me. A reason that, well, he said, well, I thought I had to pick them up within thirty-eight or six, it, it didn't make any sense. Point is, he never picked them up. So I told him that what he would need to do, cause I don't have any direction here. I told him, you need to submit a request. For an extension on the approval. And give us something in writing, come to the planning board meeting in October, present it to us. And in my mind, we would just redate it, cause there are no issues, but he has a responsibility. So he didn't show up tonight. I'm just going to leave it in our. Our file. He won't be able to do anything with it legally. He's starting to do some work on the property. He put in some drainage and it looks like he may build a building there, but without it being. Well. He would be able to get a building permit, because right now it's a single lot. But at some point, he'll.
On a lot, it's not approved and all.
Oh, it's an approved building lot. It's just.
No, no.
Being existing.
Wants to divide it. He's gotta be careful where those setbacks are.
And that, and that would be the only issue. If he starts building before he has filed this. Then we would have the responsibility to look at his plan to be sure setbacks are met. So this is in the file. I'm waiting on him and I'm not going to take any more action, but I thought I would inform the board. Because it is a regulation that says it, it's considered null and void.
Do you wanna, do we wanna just let Joe Miller be aware, so?
Uh, that's a good point, yeah.
Just so he knows.
Yeah.
Cause he might be another person to say, hey, you know, you ought to get back to the planning board.
Yes, when I talked to Mister Haas, he threw out Joe Miller's name as being some, giving him some advice, but. I mean, it's planning board business. It's not CEO business, but the CEO business would come in in turn. I mean, it's planning board business, it's not CEO business, but the CEO business would come in in terms of issuing a building permit. And so, so that's a good point, I will contact uh Joe Miller and let him know the situation that the subdivision has not been. Um submitted to the county. And.
And everything.
Just, I mean, everything's done, it's right here. So I thought I would mention it and and that would be my plan is he would, I'm gonna ask him to submit something to us.
You ever run into this before?
We have run into uh people asking for an extension, but they've known about it. Because they couldn't get the survey map, you know, within sixty-two days of our approval and they couldn't get the map. And so they have come and asked for an extension and we've given them the extension. So I thought I would mention it to the board, but that's a good point, uh I will contact Joe Miller, so he's aware of this. And see where it goes. Okay. Anything else? All right, Dwight, is there a second? Darlis, okay, all in favor, I opposed, thank you.